Call meeting to order, please join in the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, welcome to the July fourteenth session of your Brookings City Council. As city clerk to record attendance.
Mayor and council members, as I call your name, will you please respond with present as we are not all here in person? Bacon?
Present.
Brink?
Present.
Collins? Corbett?
Present.
Niemeyer?
Present.
Tilton Byrne?
Holly has joined.
Tilton Byrne? Please respond with present. Thank you. Wendell?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve.
Removed.
Okay, we'll take that as a motion as second. Any public comment on consent agenda? Council comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Corbett?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now, under open forums and presentations, I'd like to call the Chair of the Brookings Committee for people who have disabilities, Mark Sternhagen, bring up here for proclamation.
Alright, Mayor, our proclamation for the city of Brookings. Whereas, the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was passed on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety, as the first comprehensive declaration of equality for people with disabilities and protects the rights of all aspects of employment in accessing public services and guaranteeing access to private establishments. Whereas, the goals of the community aligns with providing people with disabilities with the opportunities and support to achieve full integration and inclusion in society in an individualized manner. Whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience that does not diminish the right to enjoy the opportunity to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience full integration and inclusion with necessary services and supports. And now therefore I keep Corbett Mayor, the city of Brookings, to hereby proclaim July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, as the Americans with Disabilities Act thirtieth anniversary day. And I call upon all the people of Brookings to recognize and celebrate the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommending our efforts to reach full ADA compliance for people with disabilities in the city of Brookings and continue advocating for full inclusion and equity of individuals with disabilities in all aspects of society. Mark, do you want to say a few words?
Yeah.
You get it for me.
It's often been said that ADA is the equal rights amendment for the disabled. And in a lot of ways, that's true. But the other thing about ADA is it's a basic set of rules and guidelines to help equalize things. But it really, we need to look and go further. And I have to commend, the city of Brookings actually goes way above and beyond what is required by ADA. And many of the, any projects that are part of city funding require that you do things, a lot of things that go way beyond ADA. And I really appreciate that. And I know that that really makes a big difference in the community of what Brookings does. Some of the things lately, we've had some things that really kind of, maybe can make people stop and think what it really is like to be disabled a little bit. You know, when you had this shelter at home thing, and there were so many things that people couldn't do. I can't go out and do this, I can't do that. Well, welcome to my world. There's a lot of things in my life that I've not been able to do. And I just have to look at that and say, well, I'm not going to say that I turn around and say, well, I guess I never wanted to do that anyway, they're just sour grapes. I could look at it that way, but I look at it and try to realize and focus on what's the positives. But as you think about those things that you couldn't do and you're complaining about not being able to get out and stuff, every time a disabled person in a wheelchair sees a flight of stairs, that's the feeling that they get. There are things that I can't do. I can't just go up those stairs, I hope there's an elevator. And ADA has made it be more accessible and make people more aware. And I think we need to stop and think about that and put it in our own personal perspective. And I thank you for the proclamation tonight, and thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment. No, you're good, you're good. Hi, everyone, my name is Brianna Doran, and I am the Vice Chair of the Brookings City Committee for People of Disabilities. And I would just like to take another moment to acknowledge the profound significance of the passage of the ADA. Like Mark in the proclamation said, this was the first comprehensive protection of rights for individuals with disabilities. And we also have so many partners and resources in Brookings that we're very grateful for. And we'd like to acknowledge who couldn't be here tonight, such as Advance, Project Search, Independent Living Choices, Vocational Rehab, Art Factory with the Arts Council, Beta, so many more that I know I'm not naming, but I think that just goes to show how many businesses and organizations and programs are really committed to individuals with disabilities. And as a committee, we invite our city leadership and the rest of Brookings to continue to support and advocate for individuals with disabilities and build up a better quality of life for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please pass along to your committee, I know a lot of those folks are very, very busy, but they always make time to make it better for people, so please pass along our appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing with open forum now, any member of the public can speak to a topic that's not on the agenda tonight, and an item that might reschedule, so you know the routine.
Hello again, Bradley Walker, resident of Brookings. Since I didn't get a chance to speak at the last meeting, I thought I would come back and share my thoughts that I wanted to share that night. Again, you know my position, I think that all these restrictions should be lifted. So let's look at some facts. No one has died from COVID in Brookings County. Hospitals are not being overwhelmed with COVID patients. There is currently no one in the hospital for COVID. The flu season lasts seven months from October to April, according to CDC tracking. In twenty seventeen, there were two hundred and seventeen deaths in South Dakota from flu pneumonia. Twenty seventeen was the last year I could find stats for. So far this year, there have been a hundred and nine deaths statewide from COVID. That would be in the four months, March through June. If you double that projection to eight months instead of the seven for which the CDC tracks the flu season, you get two hundred and eighteen deaths, which is basically the same as the two hundred and seventeen that died from the flu in twenty seventeen. And there were no businesses closed or restricted, no schools shut down, no events canceled in twenty seventeen because of the flu. So my question is, why is this so much different? There have been ninety-five cases of COVID in Brookings County. That's total cases, recovered and current. With thirty-five thousand residents, that equals to an infection rate of zero point zero two eight percent. Now, if you do just the active, there's eighteen active cases currently. If you do that by the thirty-five thousand residents, that is an infection rate of zero point zero 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 five percent. Nobody wants to be sick. But people are responsible for their own health, not the government. Citizens have been bombarded with guidelines on how to prevent themselves from getting sick. People have done a good job so far and are not suddenly going to stop because the organs goes away. Ask yourself, how many people have you encountered who are coughing and sneezing when you're out in public? In my case, no one. Mr. Wendell? Your replies to the last speaker on her questions, one of your replies was, "If more people don't wear masks, the restrictions will remain in place longer." To me, that sounds like a threat. You said your decisions are based, are guided by science, but you seem to ignore the science. You stated that in order to continue to go into, move on to an additional phase, that there has to be a downward trend in cases for a fourteen-day period. According to the DOHSD.gov website, Brookings County four-day trend line for positive tests is decreasing from the period of June thirtieth to today. Also, the chart for South Dakota influenza-like illnesses weekly surveillance percentage from week forty of twenty nineteen to week seventeen, this is this current week of twenty twenty, shows that this current year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, is lower than twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen seventeen, twenty seventeen eighteen, and twenty eighteen nineteen. At the peak of the chart, twenty nineteen is lower than twenty sixteen seventeen and twenty seventeen twenty eighteen. I went and got my hair cut today, or yesterday, at Carousel, which is on the south side of Sixth Street across from Buffalo Wild Wings. And the parking lot was like a ghost town. There was nobody in front, nobody at any of the business there. The Nine Round, Bay Parkade, Verizon, Walk to Go. Businesses are being, aren't afforded to be able to be open. Mr. Niemeyer, your comments regarding the vote on the ordinance said, you said, "There were no reports of COVID from the protests, and there would have been announced if there were." Later, you said, "We have no idea where this is coming from and how many people are getting it." You have admitted many times through this forum that you are not given the information of who gets it, where they get it, who their contacts are.
Right. Can I, can I answer that one right away?
Sure.
Reason why I said that?
Yeah.
It would have to be publicly announced because there's no way they could contact trace, contact trace that particular incident. So there is a website, on the COVID nineteen website, if someone was to possibly get it from there and they assumed they got it from there, it would be posted, like for instance, if you were in Walmart, say, three days ago, and somebody there happened to be in there that had nineteen, they would have to announce if you were in Walmart from, say, ten-thirty to two-thirty in the afternoon, when that person was in there, then you should probably get yourself checked. There is a, there is an incident news thing on the website that is if, like for instance, that Black Lives Matter march that we had here, there's no way they could contact trace any of that. So they have to publicly announce that if somebody possibly had COVID nineteen in that group, that if you possibly were exposed, then you would have to go get yourself checked. That's why I made that statement the way I did.
Okay, well, like I said, you know, before you said, there's no way for the--
There's no way for us to know, but that particular incident would have been publicly announced.
Okay, but I don't understand how that, how that one incident could be, have priority over the other ones.
Like I said, if they can't possibly contact trace, they publicly announce if there was an incident anywhere. There's more than just that one that, that if, if there was, and there hasn't been any announcements on that one.
Of nobody, yeah, of nobody getting COVID from being at that march?
Right.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, it's confusing to me when you say you don't know where, all these, there's eighteen active cases now, but it's confusing to me where, how you can't say if one's in white, one's in Aurora, ten are here in Brookings. And then all of a sudden be able to publicly say that this one case was definitely caused by this event. It's kind of--
As far as we know, there wasn't any cases from it. Like I said, it was not publicly announced, and it would have been because they can't contact trace that particular incident.
Okay.
That's how I based my statement.
Okay.
And the Department of Health will not give us that information. We have asked many, many times. We are not--
I think, I think there should be some way to remedy that.
No, if you can get it remedied, let us know, we'd be happy to get that done.
Like I said, you know, the infection rate is minuscule, and none of this before caused major disruptions of people's lives, loss of income, shuttering of businesses. You know, it's not, it's not like this is, you know, a one percent, even a one percent would be what, three hundred and fifty out of thirty-five thousand in the county? And we're not even close to that. So why are we still shuttering these businesses? And, I mean, so eighteen people out of three hundred and fifty thousand. You know, you got a better chance of winning the lottery than getting COVID around here, as far as I'm concerned. Seems to me the odds are a lot higher to do that. So I'm just trying to say, trying to say is, basing this on emotion and trying to do the right thing supposedly, helping people is causing more harm than good. And, you know, we've been through this, you know, stay at home, flatten the curve. Well, the curve is flattened, the trend is going down. And again, no one has died here. So again, I think that the cure cannot be worse than the disease, and that is what's happening now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak?
Mayor Corbett, this is Holly.
Yes, Holly.
And I would just like to say, he points out some good points, and that the points are that our, our numbers are very low. And I, I believe that part of the reason why our numbers are very low is because of the restrictions that we have put in place. I would consider our community very lucky that we haven't seen more cases and more hospitalizations and we haven't yet seen a death. And, and I truly believe that part of the reason for those positive numbers for our community is because of the precautions that we have in place. I'd also just like to clarify that at this point, we do not have any businesses closed. We just have certain restrictions in place for certain businesses so that distancing can take place. And I do think that that's important, an important distinction to make is that we don't currently have any businesses closed, but rather we have these, these restrictions. And I think that part of the significance in that is, if we were to lift these restrictions and then suddenly see another significant spike, we may find ourselves in another circumstance where businesses would have to be closed, as we're seeing in several other states and communities across the nation. And so I stand by the, the decision that we made to extend, especially knowing that in the very near future, we will have an influx of population in Brookings when the schools reopen. So just a couple of points to put out there.
Thanks, Councilmember Tilton Byrne. Also, Brink.
Yes, I would like to comment on that as well because I think it's, it's challenging to say that the measures are working because what we're doing, imagine that we're all inside a sieve, a screen door, right? It's porous. We're not controlling anyone coming in or out of this community. There are hundreds of people in town right now for, for big events. All of our restrictions are simply targeted at a certain small segment of what actually goes on in our community. So I feel like it's a challenging leap logically to say that our restrictions are causing us to have lowercase accounts. I think it's probably more luck because if we're not, if we're not able to control anyone else's movements or where they've been, or where they go, or who they interact with, and they're all coming into our community, the only thing that we're saying is that you can only have half of the population of your restaurant that you would usually have in your restaurant. So to me, I'm not convinced that that's a strong argument, and I would just like to make that known.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bacon?
And I just also want to differentiate, you asked about the difference between the flu and this. In that case, with the flu, we have vaccine and we have treatments. In COVID, we have neither. So if we, we are very fortunate that we've been proactive as a community and we've been able to keep those numbers down. But if we would have a huge surge and there's no treatment, and there's no way to vaccinate the rest of the community to prevent getting it, so there's a huge difference, so you can't really compare the flu to COVID in that case. The other thing is, I was sharing with a couple of people today, I have heard from a number of constituents who have doctors in Sioux Falls. And I was just at an extensive doctor appointment today myself. And all of those doctors have commended Brookings for being the most proactive community in the state, that we took the initiative right away and that we were able to keep it down so that, as Holly said, we are no longer, you know, every business is allowed to be open. We have put some restrictions on some of them, but every business is allowed to be open. Part of the problem, when you don't see cars in front of it, is people are still not comfortable shopping. And, and there's nothing we can do about that, and hopefully someday they'll feel more comfortable.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor.
I just want to say that you use your rationale that there's a vaccine, a flu shot, well, that doesn't stop, the numbers say that the same amount of people are dying with that vaccine. They're still dying of the flu. The same amount of people are dying from the flu with the vaccine, they're dying from COVID without the vaccine. So my point is, there's no difference. No one shut down, shuttered, or told people that they had, they only could use fifty percent capacity in their businesses, and those schools were closed, no events were canceled in twenty seventeen when those people died and there was a vaccine. That's my point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Close the public forum at this time, under contract exchange orders, ask CFO to come up and talk to Resolution twenty-sixty-three.
Good evening. Staff recommends approving this resolution. This is one of the first steps to get prepared to receive the available aid that is allocated to the different municipalities from the state. I would like to clarify for everybody's knowledge that there are five point five million dollars available. This does not mean that we're able to get them all. The state has been very clear that it's not to replace revenue, it's mostly to pay for expenses that weren't budgeted due to COVID. So more to come, right now, we need to sign, we ask you to approve these resolutions so we can start the process to engaging with the state and First District to start those conversations of what we can get reimbursed by.
Do you guys have any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Yes.
So I understand that this will cover costs between March first of twenty twenty and December thirtieth of twenty twenty. But after we pass this resolution, are we able to start submitting requests immediately for costs that we know have been incurred?
Yes, so the way it's going to work, we engage through First District, and we send them a reimbursement request after we comply with the three things that we need to do, this is one of them. And then they get back to us to see if it's approved or not. So it's a back and forth until we get reimbursed for something, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-sixty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion as second. Any public comment on the resolution? Seeing none, close the public comment. Councilmembers comment or questions? Please call a roll.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye. Okay, Resolution twenty-sixty-three is approved. There are no first readings at this time, so we'll go into public hearings and second readings, and I'd call Community Development Director Mike Struck up.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, members of the audience. Ordinance twenty-zero-eleven is an ordinance rezoning a portion of land out in the Timberline Edition, it's approximately forty acres. It's currently zoned ag, and it is proposed to be rezoned to R-one C and R-one D, which are both single-family districts. And then a portion of it would be zoned R-three, which is kind of a multi-family, higher-density district. The R-three portion is really to match up with an area just a little bit to the north of the area. And it's to try and avoid split zoning. The intention was to all kind of do an R-one C, a single-family district. It is consistent with our comprehensive plan as well as, I believe it's goal two of the workforce initiative of your city strategic plan. So I would stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, at this time, it opened a public hearing on this issue. Seeing no one approaching, close the public hearing, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion as second. Council comments or questions? Councilmember Bacon?
We aren't going to change it, I know, but I just have to say I'm disappointed that we have cul-de-sacs back in here again. It's just such a not effective way to provide housing that's more affordable.
Councilmember Bacon, that would actually be the next item on the agenda. Not this particular item, but we'll get to it.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Please call a roll.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance twenty-eleven is approved. Call Community Development Director to speak to the next one.
Thank you again, Mayor and councilmembers, members of the public. Next action item is approval of a preliminary plat for approximately eighty residential lots in the area that was just approved for rezoning, as well as an area further north. This preliminary plat was, a majority of it was previously approved back in, I think it was two thousand and nineteen. And it encompassed quite a bit of the area south of Summit Pass. And the area that we just talked about in the rezoning, there's an area, Red Rock Road, and there's about nine lots or so that are on the south side of Red Rock Road. Unfortunately, there was, the engineer, when he submitted the preliminary plat, submitted it for the entire eighty lots, of which about seventy of them had already previously been approved in the streets and infrastructure, it all kind of been installed. But it is consistent, it meets our subdivision regulations, it meets the zoning ordinance, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan from a density development standard. And so Planning Commission and the DRT both reviewed this and recommended approval of it. I stand for any questions you may have.
Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion as second. Any public comment on this one? Seeing none, close the public comment. Council comments or questions? Councilmember Brink?
Go ahead.
Yeah, and so this was a case, they actually had more cul-de-sacs planned. And we went back to the developer and said, no, we had like some streets extended further through, so I can't remember the exact name of it, but it's Eagle Avenue or Drive or something that was originally planned to be a cul-de-sac. We did talk about with this most recent preliminary plat, because they brought in the whole area, do we make them change, convert some of those cul-de-sacs over and put a through street? They would lose a couple of lots. But they would have to go in and extend the infrastructure, plus their grading operations would change. Some of those lots around the cul-de-sacs were graded such that there would be walkouts. And so to take away that cul-de-sac opportunity and require them to put through streets through there would, you know, be quite expensive. And my guess is they probably would have withdrawn the preliminary plat and kept the one that was previously approved in place because the reality of it is, it was a mistake on the part of their engineer that submitted the entire eighty-lot area when really only it was Red Rock, Red Rock Drive and about nine lots that really needed to be reviewed, so.
Any other question? Councilmember Brink?
I was just going to make a comment, I noticed in the, in the materials on this item that the issue of parks was discussed in the Planning Commission meeting, and I was mindful of the resident that came and spoke a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, about kind of a lack of parks and things like that over in that area anyway. And I just wondered if you have any comments on that and what that outlook might look like.
That was one of the items that the Planning Commission kind of talked about at their last, Planning Commission meeting last Tuesday. last, Planning Commission meeting last Tuesday. So within our subdivision regulations, there is language that would allow the Planning Commission to ask the developers to reserve some land set aside for future parks. We do not have a parkland dedication ordinance, so then it comes back to the city to negotiate either through a donation or acquisition. And currently, right now, we don't have funds budgeted for that. We had some discussions probably almost ten years ago when that park master plan was kind of put in place, and we were trying to do a better job of being more strategic in our location of future parks because a lot of neighborhoods were asking for kind of their own little pocket parks, and it really taps maintenance staff, and it's costly. And so we wanted to be more strategic in the location of them. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get started earlier this year on an update to that master parks plan. But kind of the concept we've been looking at is trying to do a better job of utilizing trail systems to connect parks to each other, and so there's gonna be some opportunities utilizing some of the linear green space and drainage ways that we can incorporate some trails and try and do a better job of connecting.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor Corbett, this is Holly.
Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Hiltonburn.
I'm, I'm interested in knowing what the water table is like in this particular area.
Councilmember Hiltonburn, unfortunately, we don't have that information readily available, what the water table is. We do know that the land does slope to the southwest, and up on the, the screen, you can see a lot of that red area is the floodplain. Now, you can fill the floodplain and develop in those areas. Our ordinance requires that, to do so, you have to build one foot above the base flood elevation. In this particular location, a lot of their drainage is being incorporated along West Sixteenth, which is the gravel road out there. It's somewhat, you can faintly see the West Side Interceptor. It, it basically extends from Brighton Road diagonally northwest, kind of up towards the very corner of the Timberline Edition. Development west of there is somewhat limited because they're, they are having some challenges of getting a proper slope for the sanitary sewer to tie back in. So the water table is challenging all over Brookings, and I don't know if it's any different in this particular area, but it does get a lot more wet as you get to the west end of the development, but they're also planning not to have houses in that area as well.
Do you know if the plans for the homes that, that will be put up include basements?
Some of them may have the ability to be like a split level, but, excuse me, full basements wouldn't work in this area. There just isn't enough depth to get back to the sanitary sewer. They would have to have individual lift stations within the house to be able to pump the sewer back to the Brighton Road interceptor line.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, please call or roll.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Hiltonburn.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next call on CFO to come back up here and speak to, second reading and action ordinance twenty dash fifteen.
Good evening. As mentioned in the previous session, this supplemental ordinance is to carry forward the funds for the Bob Sheldon complex project that we're, we're not using twenty nineteen. This is not incremental to the project, to the project's budget, and the project's still on time and on budget. Schedule finish dates for the fall this year. Any questions?
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any public comment, questions? Seeing none, close the public comment. Council comments or questions? Okay, please call or roll.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Hiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty dash fifteen is approved. Last one is Resolution twenty dash fifty-nine. Call CFO up again.
Hello again. This resolution actually was an initiative by last year by one of the city council members, and it was to create a fund for unplanned retirements. In the past, as you may be aware, it was a budget burden when somebody retired. We didn't plan for that. So with funds left over from payroll last year, we created this fund. So what this resolution is requesting is to allocate for the two retirements that we've experienced so far this year, with a total of thirty-two thousand dollars allocating to the finance and to the street department. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none, council comments, questions? Please call or roll.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Hiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Bacon.
Aye.
Resolution twenty dash fifty-nine is approved. Next item, of course, is council member introduction of topics for future discussion. Looking ahead to July twenty-eighth, five P M. study session for the budget work session number two, and then, council, if you'd give it some thought, and either respond to city manager or myself about work sessions in August. We want to go back to work sessions in August, and tend to believe we have the third workshop on budget on August eleventh, but we'll see how that goes. So if you just let Paul or myself know, appreciate it. Anything else you've got in your mind?
I, I wanted to make a suggestion, and I'm not sure, maybe it's more of a question. Obviously, we're all preoccupied with COVID nineteen, and that's a big thing on everyone's mind, it's on the public's mind, and I just wonder what our options might be, and maybe this is a question for Steve or, or you, Paul, to have a standing agenda item where we give an update or have public discussion on COVID and what's going on with it in the community and what we're doing about it outside of having an ordinance or new ordinance that we need to talk through necessarily, but is there an option for something like that in, in our public meetings?
Yeah, I think every meeting, you do have the option to have a report given by that. It just depends on what you would like to have. We have right now a weekly YouTube video that we're doing with Bonnie Speckler on her report, and then she gives, actually on Fridays, a detailed analysis of where we're at nationally, regionally, and locally. We could provide that information as well as anything else that council might desire. So if you can give me an indication, maybe what you're looking for, and we can sure provide that as well.
Perfect. I'll send you some thoughts by email, and we'll...
Okay, so that's a motion for future, or do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Public comment? Seeing none? Counsel? Any discussion? Okay. Bonnie, would you please call a roll on the motion?
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Hiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
All right. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
We'll make that as a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.